Mr. Skinner to be followed by the invocation that I will read.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pray the collect of the Spotsylvania County Women's Club. Keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things. Make us grow calm, serene, gentle. Teach us to put away, put into action our better impulses, straightforward and unafraid. Grant us that we may realize it is the little things that create differences, that the big things of life, in those we are one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart, that heart of us all. And, oh Lord God, let us forget not to be kind. Amen.
First item of business, board members, is the organization of the board for calendar year 2018. And per your bylaws, section 2.4.1A, the following procedures are to be followed for the election of chairman. I, as presiding officer at this point in your meeting, open the floor for nominations for the chair.
I'd like to nominate Greg Benton as the chair.
Mr. Benton's nominated for chair. Are there any other nominations?
A motion that we close nominations for chair.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nays? One nay, but the nominations are closed for chair. Vote, please, for the one nominee, Mr. Benton, for chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Spotsylvania County, calendar year 2018. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's two nay, Mr. Yakubowski and Mr. Skinner. Mr. Benton, the meeting is yours and you are chairman.
Now we move for the election of the vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Gary Skinner.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Trampy for vice chair.
Okay, we have nomination from Mr. Yakubowski for Mr. Skinner and a nomination from Mr. Ross for Dr. Trampy.
Take a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Nomination's closed. Let's do Mr. Yakubowski's nomination for Mr. Skinner first. All those in favor of Mr. Skinner? By ayes?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Would this be easier for roll call?
Yeah, roll call, ayes the best.
Let's do roll call. Mr. Yakubowski. Mr. Marshall. Mr. McLaughlin.
No.
Mr. Ross.
Nay.
Mr. Dr. Trampy?
No.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
And I'm a nay. Okay, this would be for the nomination for, by Mr. Ross for Dr. Trampy. Mr. Yakubowski? Uh, Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Nay.
And I'm a yea. Nomination goes through. Dr. Trampy, you are vice chair.
Per your bylaws, Mr. Chairman, after the seating of Dr. Trampy to your left, then seating proceeds based on seniority and years on the Board of Supervisors. Longest serving is Mr. Skinner at ten years, followed by Mr. Yakubowski at eight years. Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Ross, and Dr. Trampy are at six years. And Mr. Marshall is new.
Ms. Skinner, you can have a choice of your chairs.
I take them.
That's all right. Mr. Yakubowski? Mr. McLaughlin? Or Mr. Ross? You all can fight it out. That's where I sat my first year anyways. I'd like to do some appointments for, from the chair if I, if some may allow me. Again, I'll start first by saying there is, again, some confusion about who or what I can appoint and not appoint from the chair position. I would like to do these appointments and just get a board vote if we can. That way we cover it both ways and nothing has to come back to us if the board so agrees. And I'll just start out and then we can have that discussion in a moment. And Mr. Taylor, if you would, I'd say by next, next meeting, if you could get with our attorneys and staff and let's work this through as far as these appointments and what specifically a chair can appoint and can't appoint, so we don't keep going through this every year. It'd be helpful if the staff had a specific, just list of specifics of what I can appoint and then what has to be appointed by, two different lists, I think would make it very easy. For the agricultural and forestry district review committee, that will remain the same. I'll stay on that. CPMT board, Mr. Yakubowski. GWRC, change would be Mr. Yakubowski. I will remain on it. And then David Ross and Mr. McLaughlin would be alternates. The Rappahannock River Basin Commission, Kevin Marshall would be primary. David Ross and myself be alternate. And Amy, if I'm going too fast, let me know. FAMPO, it's gonna be David Ross, Tim McLaughlin, and Kevin Marshall. Paul Trampy and Mr. Taylor be alternates. Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, that will remain the same. Tim McLaughlin will be the primary. Chris Yakubowski and David Ross will be alternate. Fredericksburg Regional Council, that will remain the same also. Mr. Taylor, your primary. Mr. Trampy, or Dr. Trampy, I apologize, will be alternate. Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors, Mr. Yakubowski. Lake Anna Advisory Committee, that's gonna be Kevin Marshall with Chris Yakubowski alternate. Rappahannock Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission, it'll be Gary Skinner and Gail Crooks. Capital Construction Committee, that's gonna remain the same. Paul, Dr. Trampy, Mr. Ross as primary. Mr. Skinner and Mr. Cole, Mark Cole, as alternates. Finance Committee, remain the same. Dr. Trampy and Mr. Ross. Minority Affairs Committee, be Kevin Marshall and Mr. Skinner. Public Safety Committee, be Mr. Marshall and myself. Transportation Committee, be Mr. McLaughlin and myself as primary. Dr. Trampy and Mr. Yakubowski as alternate. Extended Leadership Council, be Kevin Marshall as an alternate, I'm sorry. Myself as a primary, Kevin Marshall as alternate. Joint Fleet Maintenance, remain the same. Mr. Skinner. The YMCA Board of Directors, be Mr. Yakubowski. And the Military Affairs Committee will be Mr. Marshall. If everybody's, I sent these out a little earlier anyway, so I'll give you all heads up, but if you all, if we could do a roll call vote as far as approval, that way we don't have to come back unless somebody has another idea.
I'll make a motion to approve, as you just read off, all the appointments and nominations.
Ms. Skinner, you have some?
Now, with, on this Transportation Committee, this is the one that we had three people last year that I finally got on, and I'm now off of it.
No, you're still on it.
Explain it to me, please.
You appointed yourself last year.
Well, I got the board's permission to do that. Okay, so.
You're still on it representing Lee Hill.
I still don't.
It's not, it's not, your appointment as a Lee Hill representative is for Lee Hill and it's not a board appointment. You're still on it.
Okay, thank you very much to clarify that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple. First of all, CPDMT and the Area Agency on Aging, I don't even know when they meet, so I'm not even sure if I would be able to do that, nor with the YMCA board. I'm not sure when they meet, nor if I would be able to attend those meetings. So I would ask that those three at least be taken off of the motion, because I don't want to agree and then not be able to be there because of prior commitments.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll do a roll call vote with the alternate motion from Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can I ask one thing?
Go ahead.
I didn't see this. You have assigned me VRE, but PRTC is another that I was, can you?
Those two, I was being told that the chair does not. It's the board action on those. I can.
Oh, okay.
I can say them and then we can just do a roll, as long as you do the roll call, you're on it. Do you want me to do that?
I'm fine with every way you want to do it, as long as I'm taking on PRTC. Really doesn't matter. If that's the way you saw it, that's fine. Because we already approved it last month.
How about another, how about another friendly amendment where, on top of yours, I'll add the PRTC and.
We can, but I do believe, Mr. Chair.
I believe, Mr. Chair, that last month we did approve Mr. Skinner and Dr. Trampy on the PRTC.
Right, and that certification was sent to them because they require it on a different calendar cycle.
I was told early it was just for a month. That's what I was, the information I was given.
Was for one month?
Was for a month, one month. Let's just do it again.
Then I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right. So PRTC would be the same. Mr. Skinner, you're on that. Dr. Trampy, you're on that. Mr. Ross, you're an alternate. Same with Mr. McLaughlin. And the VRE would be the same. Mr. Skinner, you're the primary. Dr. Trampy would be the alternate. I think this covers everything, hopefully. Any other comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Skinner, I mean, Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
This time I'd like to present, Mr. Ross, with a plaque, real quick, from that, for your chairing the board for this past year. I just want to commend you on your service to not only the board, but our community and citizens, and job well done.
Thank you very much.
You want a picture?
Later.
All right, Mr. Taylor, he's in your court.
Next item would be the adoption of the board's bylaws and code of ethics. Ms. Cook is here.
Good afternoon. Trying to remember to turn this on, but I guess this is on this time. And Susan Cook, I'm the deputy county attorney, and as you may recall, I've been here in, I was here in November and December, and I'm here to review changes to the board bylaws before you vote on those changes. Now, I was here in November and December, and I'm not going to go over the changes that we discussed before, but at, and then after the December meeting, members raised other changes, so those are the changes that I'm going to go through right now, so that the board has had an opportunity to see those. And then I'm going to ask, for the sake of clarity, for our sake in later recording, what has happened, I'm going to ask if you would consider voting on each of the new changes as I address them, so that we'll know how those go. And then, after we've finished those, if anyone wants to revisit one of the changes we've already discussed, I would ask that you call that out. Otherwise, what we would, how we see this going, so that we can ensure, again, doing what you've told us to do, is that we would ask you to vote on the red line changes as a whole, other than what we're just going through. And that would work like the consent agenda, so that if you adopt it, if you don't take something out of those red line changes, then they would be adopted by your vote adopting the bylaws, if that makes sense. But that's kind of our, that's our suggested strategy for how we go. So, and then, well, then there's my slide telling you that it's like the consent agenda. So there have been several changes raised by different board members, and these are working in order of where they would appear in the bylaws. So that's how they were ordered, no, no other thoughts there. Slide four will take you to section 4.1E5 of the bylaws. Mr. Skinner raised, oops, I'm sorry, changed my page. Raised several issues for the board to consider with respect to public presentations. Slide four is, would be the first section would be affected. And in this one, basically, he's asking the board to consider that speakers at public presentations only speak from the podium rather than from the table, that they only use the microphone and not the board computer, or excuse me, the floor computer, and that only one person at a time appear at the podium. Those are the suggested changes. Now, you see certain language there that's called out. It says the county computer, and that's in purple, and that's because in your red-lined version, it just says the computer. But after the red-lined version went out to each of you, Mr. Holston and I were discussing it, and we thought it was a bit clearer to say that what we mean is the county computer. Again, that's for your consideration, you can change that, but I'd just point out that that's a change from what you have in your packet. And also, let me add, if did forget to say, you received in your board notebook a red-lined version of the bylaws. That redlined version does include all of the changes that you see here, as well as everything we've been over before. So if you are willing, I would ask you to address this one at this point in time.
Mr. Chair. So I agree with this change, except for, in the past, we've always allowed citizens to use the county computer, especially if they come beforehand and have a flash drive. I do think a picture's worth a thousand words, or a video if they were to choose that, and that's happened in the past. If they could be more transparent, and the public can see it if they use the computer as well. So I would, I would like to have that part stricken, but keep the rest, for those reasons.
Ms. Skinner?
Mr. Chair, if I may, please. Okay, I don't have a problem, I just don't want organizations sitting down at the table. And again, if we stick by, okay, it's easier, once in a while, if I have a presentation, they got three minutes that they can do it, than four or five minutes for a organization.
Sure.
And, you know, I won't disagree with that. I can accept that. I just want to make sure that we don't happen, because before we know it, we're gonna have presentations, and we have committees that people should go through to explain what they want, and let those committees come back to us as a board and present that. So my feeling is I can accept that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
So what we're gonna do is approve the motion without the computer, so they may use, and I would ask that, if we could do this too, just to keep the, the meeting moving, could we ask them to, prior to the start of the meeting, have that done? So if they have to come in a half hour early, or whatever, they do that. Okay? So we're gonna adopt what you said, but we're gonna take the county computer out of it.
What I would recommend is taking out, I would strike the sentence that says, "No speaker may use the county computer during a public presentation," so that would be stricken. I would want to bring back a change requiring the half hour before, bring that back to you at a later point in time, rather than just drafting my own language that you've never seen, if that's acceptable.
Then do we vote on it now, or not?
You wouldn't vote on that unless Mr. Holston has a difference.
We've submitted a change?
Yeah, so what we would do is just, strike the sentence, as you said, you know, limiting the computer, with respect to, you know, making sure that they have, have the presentation ahead of time. We'll come back with that language and have you all adopt that at another meeting, just so we can draft that for you and make sure it's what you all want.
Okay, thank you. So we're not gonna make any motion on that, and you can go forward.
Mr. Chair, we're gonna do a vote after each one to make sure that that's what the board wants to add to the overall thing for the adoption. That way, if there's any disagreement.
You want to vote now, but without all the added stuff or stuff taken out, and then you're gonna bring that back?
No, it's, the vote here is this portion, it's this addition to add it to the overall red line, and the motion on, on Mr. Skinner's motion is to add this portion to the overall red line without that computer restriction.
Let's do a, any other comments, board? All those ayes?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
Sorry, I may have the floor computer. Here we go. The next, the next two slides will be taken together. Again, Mr. Skinner suggested he had two options with respect to how to handle the times during public presentations. Slide five reflects his option where no citizen can yield time to another, but the board has the option of extending time. And then slide six is what I call the hard stop. No citizen can yield time to another citizen. The mic is turned off after either three minutes or five minutes, depending on, on the context in which the speaker is speaking, and the board does not have the option of extending the speaker's time. So this isn't, slide five and slide six isn't either or. Of course, the board can come up with its own version as well, but those are the suggestions brought to this board.
And I would just add, the first one that Susan brought up, the no yielding time to another, that's already in the bylaws for the public hearing portion, so that's just bringing it to the public presentation portion. The additional one is beyond that, that's the hard stop that you described. So that first part is actually in the bylaws for the public, I'm sorry, the public hearing, and we would just be moving that. The other one is a completely new addition.
Any board comments?
So I would just like, Mr. Chair, from my red line version, you have changed this last sentence, and I do believe there are sometimes public comments are happening where, as a board member, I want to hear more, especially if it's an important topic, and I would like to leave the board by unanimous consent, may allow any speaker to proceed past the time limit, otherwise, we're bound by our bylaws at that time. I suppose we could suspend the bylaws with two-thirds majority, but I prefer to have that option still in there, and that is in our red line version.
Ms. Skinner?
So what we're saying, but it is gonna be by unanimous consent, and if it's not unanimous consent, then we don't go back and ask for a wave of the bylaws.
That's the way I read this.
Thank you. Okay.
Is that correct, Mr.?
But I mean, I guess you.
That's correct. The way the practice has been, the chair has asked the board if there's any opposition to indicate whether any person would be that one to speak up to indicate that the consent is not unanimous. So that's been the practice, so that would continue if you adopt just that and not the hard stop.
So, Mr. Chair, I think that was one of the problems that we had, was nobody wanted to stand up and be the bad guy. Right? Because I don't think we should allow them to share time.
How can they share time?
But if we do the unanimous decision, I mean, because, you know, if we get back to the same thing that occurred here, the last couple of meetings, where, hey, I, they've granted me my time, I just don't think we should allow that. Maybe a person for a limited amount of time, but allowing somebody to share their time was just disruptive and we just don't support them. Maybe what that says, but I'm just.
I would like to see it consistent.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's what we should be doing. So we should put it in there.
Do we have a motion on this one?
Can you bring that back up, please?
What you just mentioned is already in this red line.
We have a floor computer back, please. That's correct. Again, the no yielding time, again, that was moved from elsewhere in the bylaws. Then it brings us to two options, whether it's the unanimous consent to allow or the hard stop microphone cutoff. So, so I think what the motion is, is just for the, no person shall be permitted to yield time, and the first option, which is the board might, by unanimous consent, may allow any speaker to proceed past a time limit. I think that's the motion for adoption, rather than the hard stop. That's my understanding.
I'll just do a roll call, easier that way.
Discussion, please. Let's see, that's what Mr. McLaughlin just said. Before, when the chair would say, without objection, you could speak two more minutes and another three minutes when the speaker. And that's why it put us on the spot, if somebody didn't really want to do it, then if I said no, then I'm the bad guy, and that's what we were trying to prevent, I think, Mr. McLaughlin, that you started off with.
Right, I like the hard stop.
Yes.
Three minutes, that's it.
And I would, I would go with that, too. Go with the hard stop, and then that way it's fair for everybody.
I never did hear a motion on this, so.
Well, I think we could have a vote on the two options, you know, the first, to allow extra time, and the second being the hard stop, and see which one prevails, again, but
I'll make a motion.
Whenever you all are ready.
I'll make a motion that we accept the hard stop.
All right, I'm gonna do a roll call, it's easier for, I think, everybody. Mr. Yakubowski?
Just so I'm clear, I'm voting on the hard stop.
Hard stop. It was the motion by Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
All right, Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Nay.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair's aye.
And I would raise then for your attention that this is a sister provision to, I believe it's section 5.3C, which is when someone comes to speak at a public hearing. That has the same time limit, it does not have the hard stop. Do you want us to put that in for the public hearing portion, as well as the public presentation portion?
I would say, I would recommend yes.
Board, Ms. Marshall?
The way, I'm looking at this at the bottom of number six on this, the board by unanimous consent may allow any speaker to proceed past the time limit. Are we still having that option to allow someone to speak if the board unanimously agrees?
We haven't voted on it yet, but.
That's, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
They just voted for the public presentation time to hard stop, so there will be no allowance, and that's what you voted for as well. There's no allowance for extra time. So what we're asking now is, that was for public presentation, there's a sister provision for public hearings, when there's a public hearing, and we just want to make sure that, to be consistent, that you all want the same provision in that. So that's what we ask for direction now.
So, Mr. Chair, along that, what I think I'm trying to do is make it more, so it's not as easy just as a, yeah, go ahead, because even if we initiate the hard stops, the board can still, by what, five, two votes, suspend the bylaws, and then go ahead and suspend the bylaws essentially, and allow the speaker to do it without having the provision in there.
Right.
So I would say, let's do hard stop, and it'd have to be, to me, it should be the extraordinary case that we allow somebody to speak, beyond their allocated time.
Absolutely, but if we get to that point, we can suspend the bylaws and allow citizens to continue the presentation.
Right, because we always have that opportunity, correct?
Right, okay.
All right, any other comments?
The motion is to, for public hearing to also have the hard stop at their time limit.
Are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion, please.
All right. Let's do a roll call again, or unless anybody has any more comments. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Skinner? Chair's aye.
So, the following motion, excuse me, slide, right. The next three slides, it's too big to fit on one slide, and it covers three separate subsections, are reflecting an issue that Dr. Trampy raised with respect to perfecting amendments. And perfecting amendments are used by the U.S. House of Representatives. They have quite an extensive guideline on how they do that. Now, the U.S. House of Representatives deals with things slightly differently than you do. They deal with a lot of written bills, and so when they're making amendments to those bills, they have a very, very complex set of rules as to how they do that. But I reviewed those and was able to boil that down to, I think, the provisions that are applicable to this board. And we'll go through and read it, but let me just explain for a minute. The first section basically just says, sets out what a perfecting amendment is. And you, the board refers to it sometimes as a friendly amendment, and that is, when someone makes a motion, that's the main motion, that's the motion that's on the floor. And a perfecting amendment would be an amendment that kind of changes the wording, maybe changes the term here or there, designed to improve the motion, but it's not what we consider a substitute motion. So, the perfecting amendment proposes a change in order to better it. The way it works in the House of Representatives, and I will say this also, the House of Representatives' rules are not Robert's Rules of Order, because their rules actually were in existence before Robert, from Robert's Rules of Order, was born. So, they are not necessarily in conflict, but they're just not the same, and as you can imagine, they're very complex. Robert's Rules of Order has a similar type of function, and both of those sets of rules agree that when a motion is made by a member to the body, that the motion is no longer basically the property of that member, but it becomes a property of the body itself. It's the board's motion. So, what that means is that no one has to agree to accept. If I make the motion, I don't have to agree to accept or reject the perfecting amendment. That is the board's to consider, to vote on whether to accept or reject it. Now, you don't have to proceed that way, but that's the way the perfecting amendment is set out in the U.S. House of Representatives. So, that's what I have drafted here. The next, the next two slides that we get to, it might make sense to go through these three before you vote on them, even though I have adopt here, just because they are related, and it kind of doesn't make sense to take one and not the other. So, the first one, talking about the perfecting amendment, again, is just saying that you're basically changing the wording, changing a term, but not changing everything. The next section refers to what a substitute motion is. And while a motion is pending, a member other than the proponent may make a substitute motion, and a substitute motion is designed to replace. It's new and different. And so, there's not a portion of the original motion left. The third paragraph, what all this red really does in changing it, is just, tells you how you deal with a perfecting amendment and a substitute motion, which takes precedence. And basically, what it says is, you have the main motion, you have a perfecting amendment, and you can have a substitute motion. You handle the perfecting amendment before you handle a substitute motion, and you handle both a perfecting amendment and a substitute motion before you get to the main motion. If you work through here, it basically just gives you the flow chart of how you handle those motions. And I'm happy to answer questions, but that's, I believe, Dr. Trampy, that was what you were referring to. What it would do in accepting this is add some clarity to what, sometimes there's a question, what you're voting on, because maybe there's a motion, and then somebody makes a change, and there's a little bit of confusion. And I think Dr. Trampy's intent was to set this out so that it's clear at any point in time for anyone in the body to know what the motion is that's being voted on. I think that's the intent.
Mr. Skinner?
Okay, so, if I understand it right, someone makes a motion, I then ask for a friendly amendment to that motion. We would then vote on that motion, all right, to make it the friendly mission, whether he accepts it or not. And then, if somebody doesn't like that particular motion, we would then go to a substitute motion. Question I have, is the substitute motion voted on prior to the original motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the friendly amendment would then go to the board to be voted on, not to you to say, "I accept it or reject it."
No.
Unless you want it that way. I mean, it can be changed that way, but the way the House does it is this way. And then, if the, now, if the friendly amendment, if there's a, yeah. I don't need to confuse it any more than that.
Thank you.
Somebody like to make a motion on this one?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Dr. Trampy. Do a roll call vote again. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner? Chair's aye.
So, that will take us to Section 410. And earlier in the year, I know there had been a motion on, basically, we refer to as the lame duck section moratorium, and Dr. Mr. Ross asked us to bring that back, and this would, in any year when there's any seat up for election, regardless of the outcome of the election, the board would not take up certain matters after the election until the new board. Now, it has exemptions in it for things that statutorily may need to happen, or the county, you know, doesn't shut down completely, and that, these were vetted with staff to try to come up with things that would, would really pose a problem if you couldn't vote on them. Unless there are any other questions, I think it's probably pretty self-explanatory after that.
Board comments? Mr. Yak...
I was going to say, so, again, this falls under the, we could suspend the bylaws if we felt like we needed to vote on something during that period. So, it leaves it open if we had an issue.
That's always the case. You can always suspend the bylaws, but this will establish a rule that, you know, that the board intends to, unless it does suspend the bylaws. And you can see that's set out, it's only certain things. We put the allowance in that says, unless otherwise required by law. You'll recall things like telecommunications facilities, cell towers, you know, they have that federal shot clock. So, if that came within that time and you had to vote on it, this, the way it's written, it wouldn't preclude you from voting on it. We vetted it with staff, things like certain appropriations with respect to grants and things like that. You could still do that during that time. Again, we want to make sure we didn't hem ourselves in, but the remaining items, such as rezoning, special use permit, conditionally used permit, zoning text, appointments, things of that nature, those would be suspended during that time. But like Mr. McLaughlin said, can always be, you can always suspend the bylaws and do away with that, but it would just require a five to two, which is, usually means it represents an extreme case.
Mr. Yakubowski, you're next.
Thank you. Personally, I don't see any need for this. You know, we talk about trying to be business-friendly and trying to, you know, make sure that applications that go along through the process are done in a speedy timeframe. This would put behind development projects, rezoning projects. And then, also, you know, I know other places do it, and I frankly don't care what they do. Stafford is Stafford, and their representatives do what they think is best for themselves. But I'll tell you, a motion like this, a, I'm sorry, a bylaw change like this, I find quite insulting. We are elected to a four-year term, and we are entrusted with the vote for four years, not three years and 10 months. And for us to do that is basically saying that every two years, we're going to take two months out and not deal with these issues, for whatever reason is behind this. I don't think that there's ever been a problem, and I really don't like putting rules in place that address problems that don't exist. And I think that this is what it is doing, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
The only thing I'd add to that, too, is any board who's elected is not obligated to, a new board doesn't have to follow, they can, what previous boards may have set in place. So, if the new board thinks that it's not right, then on the first meeting, then go ahead and change it. And I just, like you said, we're voted for four years, and I'd like to have that ability to make a vote, whether I win or not. So, I will be voting no against this, too.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Ross?
So, I brought this up, and really, the purpose is, and this is going to apply first to Dr. Trampy, Mr. Benton, Mr. McLaughlin, and myself, is it prevents even, and I agree, there's no problem. I've never seen a problem. However, there was a problem in 2012, when four board members lost the election, and there were several things that happened during that lame duck session. The, associated with land use, but did impact our board in 2012, such as the hiring of firefighters, and they increased the salary of some staff members, which kind of handcuffed the 2012 board when we came on. Now, that wasn't land use, but this would just prevent the temptation to be more transparent. It would mean that candidates can't campaign for one thing and lose the election and vote for another afterwards, which protects the people of Spotsylvania County. And that's why I'm recommending the, and I'll make a motion to approve this as it is.
Dr. Trampy?
Mr. Chairman, since we don't yet have perfecting amendments, I'll offer a friendly amendment. Actually, I would like to add to it, make sure I phrase this right. During those two months, I would like the board to not vote to alter the contracts of contract employees whose contracts are not expiring. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, I would gladly accept that, if that's the rules we're still under.
Friendly amendment from Dr. Trampy, accepted by Mr. Ross. We'll do, any other comments?
Yeah, I got a comment. Again, I don't know what problem that we are seeking to fix. If there was a problem years ago, that's six years ago that those things had occurred. Again, I really don't know why we would even have a meeting in November and December. I mean, quite honestly, what are we going to do? We have limited ourselves to basically showing up, having the consent agenda, having some public presentation time, and going home. There's really a limiting amount of things that are done, and to the point of having a candidate say one thing and do another. You know, you can do that throughout your four-year term, and the people hold you accountable at election time. And so, I think that us handcuffing ourselves, especially with staggered terms, and every two years, taking two months off of our ability to work through projects, I don't see the benefit for the county for this.
Mr. Marshall?
I agree with Mr. Yakubowski on this. When you're setting, we're basically, as on a business sense, setting us back about 65 days for about no rezonings, no special use permit, so that's not really making Spotsylvania County very business-friendly when we take, and you look at it on the grand scheme of things. Also, you have to take into effect the time of year with the weather and different things. We could be putting, we could be pushing the business back up to 75 days by allowing some of the verbiages in this. I'm not going to, I'm not going to support slowing progress. I think that an elected official, win or lose, needs to have enough integrity to do what's right for Spotsylvania County, and for the people of the county. That's my take on it.
All right. Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, I just have, I drafted it real quickly. I'm just going to read it from the board's consideration, just make sure we're clear. So, I've added, this would be an additional enumerated item to this list, and I have it as an action to amend or terminate a contract of a contract employee unless said contract is expiring. Do I have that correct, Mr. Trampy? Doc. Dr. Trampy? Thank you.
Roll call vote. Mr. Yakubowski?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
Chair's aye. Next.
Next proposed amendment is to Section 7-3. This was Mr. Yakubowski's proposal that we encourage the timely inclusion of documents that are presented to the board, and my understanding was that not to make it a bar to admitting documents late, but to encourage any documents related to an agenda item to be included in the board notebook. And so, that would mean that they would have to be submitted ahead of time, and that was my understanding of the purpose.
Any comments from the board? Mr. Yakubowski?
I'll just explain quickly, as has already been said. Basically, this has come up several times where we don't get information until either the day of or the day before. And whether it is something that we're voting on, or it's just informational, I think that if you're going to be on the agenda, that stuff needs to be there. Now, if it's supporting documents, if it's add-on, if it's newly updated information, I'm not trying to be that rigid that we don't have that, but, you know, if it's on the agenda, you should have backing documentation for us to look at, because we need to have the information before we come to a meeting.
Any other comments? Have a motion? Oh, Mr. McLaughlin?
Quick, and I agree, and this has been a problem the whole time, but we always seem to slip things in at the last minute, too. So, we have to stop that. If it's seven days, it's seven days. And that's, I guess that's the point here, that if it doesn't make the window, it doesn't make the window.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're clear here, that this isn't, this isn't a bar. So, that, for example, a good example would be, at the last meeting, we had a special use permit for a telecommunications facility, Mr. McLaughlin's district. You know, we were working up until the last minute to work on a condition that was acceptable, and that included additional documents. So, that, for example, and that's something that had to be voted on, you know, within a certain timeframe. So, that would allow things like that, a new document to be added at that time. But what this clearly indicates is a desire of the board to have all those ahead of time, and obviously, you know, if they're not, there would obviously, I would imagine, be an explanation as to why the documents are being added. For example, a situation like that, but it would not be a bar, it's just a, it's a should, rather than a requirement.
Mr. Chair, and I agree, but I think the intent there is, the agenda item is on the agenda. You know, if you're trying to catch up, if there's a last-minute document, I don't think that's the issue. It's just, two days before the meeting, here's the whole item, okay?
Right, and, yes, with respect to an item on the agenda, that's something wholly different. But, you know, even with respect to items on the agenda, this is stating the board's desire to have as much as possible everything that is related to that agenda item.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion and make one comment, too, that I'd like to keep an eye on this and see how this transpires, and if we need to make it tighter, I think that we should. But it's really making what we do better and enhancing what we're doing, so make a motion to approve.
Motion approved, roll call. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair's aye. Next.
The next one is one that we had discussed at one of the earlier meetings, but the wording had changed. We brought it back, and this, Section 8.1, just incorporates the change that the board had made, that the, if a nominee is being proposed to a committee, and that nominee has served on a different committee for the board, that that person would not have a CV attached to the nomination. And that's, again, just because there was discussion at the last time, or the last time this was raised, included it.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, tonight, during the board comment, I'm going to ask, because I did not get it in on Friday or in time, my appointees for this year, okay? And it, all my appointees have been on the boards, and they're just being reappointed to the same position. Does that affect, in this one, does that affect my capability doing that tonight, or?
Well, no, this one does not, and this, this change was made to reflect the board's practice, that generally, the board, in my understanding, in the past, has only required the CV to be attached when it was a new appointee, somebody who'd never been appointed to a board before. The first time I brought this to the board, I thought that it was, my understanding had been that it was a reappointment to the same committee, and I was corrected to say, no, it was any committee. So, it could have served on one committee, if they're going to another committee, they don't have to have the CV. That's the practice. Again, it's up to you, but that's, this change was designed to reflect the board's current practice.
So, Mr. Skinner, that would actually effectuate what you would like to do, that you would like to reappoint people and not have all their CVs handy, so it gets you where you want to go.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Have a motion from a member?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Skinner's got a motion to approve. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair's aye. Next.
So, at this point, I would ask, you went through, and I appreciate that, and addressed the ones that are new or had been changed. So, at this point, if there is anything in the red line version that we've discussed in prior meetings that anyone wants to raise, I would ask you to do that now, because otherwise, we're going to ask you to vote on the bylaws, the red line version in toto, and then that would accept whatever else is there that we have not taken out tonight, if that makes sense.
Ross?
So, Section 3.1b, we've already approved it in a different meeting?
We haven't approved it, but it was discussed, so that would be if it is not removed now. It's like, think of it as like a consent agenda item. All of these, all of the other red line changes we haven't discussed are on this as though a consent agenda, and if you had... And if you adopt the redline version, that change will be adopted. If you take, call it out now, if you don't want that or you want to vote against it, call it out now so that that can happen.
I, I have one more change that I'd like the board to consider, and that is, uh, section four, one, A, just the order of our, our meetings, and four, one, B. So, uh, in both of them, we basically have a call to order invocation consent agenda and then public presentations. And I would recommend that, I, I know a lot of times during the consent agenda, it's supposed to go very quickly, but there have been times that we've spent 35 minutes to an hour going through the consent agenda. And, um, my recommendation is to have public presentations before the consent agenda, right after the invocation pledge on both the, uh, regular business meetings, so the second Tuesday of the month, and that's in force, four, one, A. So, basically, the three and four switch out. And then in four, one, B, the work sessions, or the fourth Tuesday of the month, the two and three would switch out. So, I'll just make, if there's any questions, I'll just make, it allows public comments before we actually vote on the consent agenda, especially if we pull something out of the consent agenda. Then it allows potentially public comments on that item before we actually vote on them, if that makes sense.
More comment? Ms. Skinner?
Uh, I, I agree with what David says. I'll, I just want to add one other thing in here, if we could. So, down here, we have board reports, and many times, we find ourselves skipping the board reports, going back, and then we come here, and then we don't give board reports until the very last thing. And I'm asking that if we stick with this. I mean, if, if, if we have to go back, then I think we need to go ahead and do the board reports next. The only thing I can see is the evening, uh, public comments. Are we, do we have to start right at 6:30 for public comments? Or can that be followed by board reports legally?
Yeah, you can, you can move the order of any of these around a, as you see fit. Absolutely.
Okay, so as it comes out, my, my motion is also to agree with David. I'll vote for that motion, but I want this board to hopefully stick with this order. So, if we go back and we miss it out here front, so that we're not giving our board reports, because there's a lot of good things that we need, the public have either gone to bed or they're, they're not waiting up until 9:30 to hear it. So, if we could just, and I don't, I guess the motion would be, friendly amendment would be just to add that we follow this order. Accepted?
Mr. Skinner? I mean, Yakubowski, sorry.
Yeah, I'm the one with the glasses. Um, and darker hair. Um, oh, great. Um, the, uh, and, and I agree with you, and I do agree, David, because there are, uh, we, we need to have the people speak their minds, and, and if we need to stay here late, then we stay here late. But they need to be able to be at the front of the agenda. The, the question I have with the board report, though, is why not move that? Because there are several times that we have things that we want to announce, whether they're town hall meetings or they're, you know, different events that are going on in the county. And why not do it when we have a captive audience? And, um, not at the end of the meeting when really nobody hears it? So, um, if appropriate, to make a friendly amendment to the friendly, can we do that? To the friendly amendment to move board reports up to after the consent agenda?
I'll accept that.
So, right now, we'll have, okay. Right, to have, uh, right now, we'll have public presentations both moved up before consent agenda. And the other item, uh, the addition was to move board reports to directly after the consent agenda. Do I have that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further comments?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead, Ms.
Are there board reports twice on an early meeting?
I don't think so.
All right, we're just going to do it in the evening or the later board, um, public comment.
Yeah, there's only, there's only one board report, uh, on, uh, the early meetings. And there are two, let's see, let's see, public, there are two public presentations.
On the early meetings are two public presentations?
That's correct.
So, you know, we wanted to follow the board report right after public presentation. That was my question. It goes on the evening of the second, on the second Tuesday, it goes on the later comment period, right? That's when it's at. We're only doing one.
First word, would you like it? Just to see what I said.
Um, I actually didn't think about that, Mr. McLaughlin, but the, um, board report, if we could put it at the beginning of the, so it, basically, the order would be call to order invocation, public presentation, consent agenda, and then board report. So, it's in the early part of the afternoon, not in the evening. Unless we want to do two times for board reports.
You have all that down, Amy?
So, it's just one board report and that's where it's moving.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
If there's nothing else that the board wants to pull out, we would ask you to vote on the redlined bylaws as they exist to adopt the rest of it, and then I can sit down.
Do we need a motion for, for that approval? All right. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Mr. Ross. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
And chair's aye. Excuse me. And actually, I think, I think we've probably violated our own bylaws now doing a whole roll call stuff, uh, voice. I meant to mention earlier that there's some issues with our internet connectivity and, uh, it was requested to do.
That's fine. We can, uh, now that you have bylaws, you can, you can, uh, move to suspend the electronic voting requirements of the bylaws. Um, but before that, um, you can go ahead and do that now, or we can go ahead and do the code of ethics. But let's go ahead. I, I would recommend to, uh, uh, move to suspend the bylaws with respect to the requirement to, for electronic voting.
Didn't catch me on that one, sorry.
So moved.
All right. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair's aye. On you.
Uh, next, uh, Mr. Chair, is the, uh, the code of ethics. Um, there, there are no changes to this. Um, we didn't have any, uh, legal issues to recommend. So, this will be, uh, the continued, uh, adoption of your code of ethics as it was previously.
Any comment? I'll make a motion to approve. Um, Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
And chair's aye. Next.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, may I have the floor computer, please?
Mr. Taylor, if I may. Uh, there was one item, uh, under the organization of the board, uh, that was, uh, skipped over, uh, and that's to adopt, uh, a resolution, uh, for the schedule of the meetings for 2018. Thank you.
I can make a motion, Mr. Chair, to adopt the, uh, schedule that's in our package for our meetings this year.
Any comment? Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Chair aye.
Now the consent agenda. And the floor computer, please. And there are, oh, we need first the approval of the agenda. We need, there are two items in the bullpen for addition. One is a reappointment of Mr. Sean Hockaday to the Transportation Committee, and the other is the appointment of David Ross to the Transportation Committee. Those are additions to your agenda. Is there a motion to add those?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Yakubowski to approve the, uh, additions. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair aye.
Thank you. The floor computer is here. The consent agenda is as follows. Number one is the approval of board meeting minutes, November 28th and December 12th, 2017 meetings. Second is appointment of Catherine Dennis to the Social Services Advisory Board for the Chancellor District. This is an unexpired term, expires June 30th of 2018. Item three is the appointment of Jennifer Maddox to the Planning Commission for Berkeley District. Term expires December 31 of 2021. Reappointment of Jeanne Powell Storm to the Board of Building Code Appeals for the Berkeley District for a term that expires December 31, 2021. Fifth is appointment of Jack Roberts to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Berkeley District. Term expires December 31, 2021. Number six is appointment of Dennis Buchanan to the Historic Preservation Commission, Berkeley District. Term expires December 31, 2021. Item seven is appointment of Joshua Templeton to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Group of the Berkeley District. Term expires January 9 of 2020. Item eight is the appointment of Amanda Blaylock to the Citizen Budget Review Committee for Berkeley District. Term expiring December 31 of 2021. Ninth is appointment of Robert Egan to the Lake Anna Advisory Committee for the Berkeley District. Term expires December 31 of 2021. Item 10, appointment of Kenneth Crist to the Cable Television and Telecommunications Commission for the Berkeley District. Term expires December 31 of 2021. Item 11 is to approve contracts with Draper Aiden Associates and SCS Engineers. These are for solid waste and landfill gas engineering, uh, task order services. Item 12 is to approve contract modifications for renewal to the Computer Cabling and Telephone Services, Inc., and Plexus Installations, Inc. These are for fiber optic cable installation services. This is the third renewal year of a four-year contract. Item 13 is to approve contract modifications to the Commonwealth Irrigation and Landscape for Grounds Maintenance Services. This is the second renewal of a four-year contract, four renewal contract. Item 14 is to authorize public hearing to consider code amendments relating to zoning notices. This is the mailing radius amendments going to public hearing. Item 15 is a budget adjustment and appropriation for FY 17 Virginia Circuit Court Records Preservation Program Grant Award of $2,599. Item 16 is a reappointment of Pamela Lake Pell to the Social Services Advisory Board for the Berkeley District for a term commencing February 1st of 2018 and expiring February 1st of 2022. Item 17 is a reappointment of C. Travis Bullock to the Planning Commission for Battlefield District for a term to expire December 31, 2021. Reap, uh, item 18 is a reappointment of Cahill DeBerry to the Cable Television and Telecommunications Commission for the Battlefield District for a term expiring December 31, 2021. Item 19 is reappointment of Dawn Napper to the Citizen Budget Review Committee, Battlefield District for a term to expire December 31, 2021. Item 20 is reappointment of Kimberly Bowen Pomato to the Citizen Budget Review Committee for Battlefield District as an alternate for a term expiring December 31, 2021. Item 21 is the reappointment of Kale DeBerry to the Minority Affairs Committee for the Battlefield District for a term that expires December 31, 2021. Item 22 is a reappointment of Mr. Robert Fogg to the Transportation Committee for the Battlefield District for a term that expires January 9 of 2019. Item 23 is a reappointment of Jeremy Bullock to the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Battlefield District for a term that expires December 31, 2021. Item 24 is approval of Spotsylvania Stars and Stripes Spectacular Event Application. This is approval of the event date for June 30th of 2018. And the additional items, reappointment of Mr. Sean Hockaday to the Transportation Committee, Berkeley District for a term that expires January 9th of 2019. And finally, the appointment of David Ross to the Transportation Committee, Cortland District for a term that expires January 9, 2019. And that is your consent agenda.
Any board members want the, any items removed or pulled? Mr. Ross?
So, I have a question about the expiration of the January of term in 19 for the last Is there a reason that it is expiring, that those appointments are expiring in January of next year? Are they?
Ms. Skinner?
So, why would that not go through Mr. Marshall's term instead of January of 19? And for my appointment?
I can think of no reason why.
And for my appointment, it should go to 31 December of 19, not January 9.
31 December of 19.
For Mr. Marshall's, it should be, was it 2021?
Mr. Chairman?
Yakubowski?
I had always thought that the Transportation Committee was, appointments were one year. And that's, that's what my understanding was.
That's what I thought. Yeah, for the transportation?
That would make sense if they are. That means you gotta reappoint your people. That would mean you're off. That would mean I misspoke if that's the case.
I have, um, Susan pointed out, it's, it's in the, the reason being that it's in the board bylaws that, uh, the appointees shall serve for a one-year term that ends upon the expiration of the chair's term at the commencement of the organizational meeting the following year.
Okay.
That's why it is that way.
So, Mr. Skinner, you need to reappoint yourself. Oh, well, yeah. Then you don't yet. Right. You're right.
All right. Anybody want any items pulled? Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross?
I'd like to pull eight and 19.
Eight and 19. Anybody else? All right. Go ahead and make a motion to approve the...
Just on the, with the bylaws that we just adopted with the term limits, far as clarification with Mr. Skinner being reappointing himself to coincide with what we just adopted, I think you do need to reappoint yourself.
Oh, that's right.
To make this, to make it go, because it's gonna fall with the terms as part of our new, uh, new bylaws.
Good catch.
Mr. Chair, that is a great catch. So, because it does say at the end of the chair's term, so even though you appointed yourself like in October, it would still end by the bylaws of what we just read. So, good catch, Mr. Marshall.
Clerical issue there. We'll go ahead and get it straight now.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, go ahead. I, I recommend that as well. Go ahead and do the reappointment, Mr. Skinner, whenever that's appropriate.
I don't have an objection.
And then just a quick vote, the ayes would be fine. Is it, is it Mr. Skinner? I'm sorry, is that Mr. Skinner's appointment?
It was Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Chair, don't you have to do the, Mr. Skinner, don't you have to do all this whole list that you just passed out? And you're on the top of it, right? And you're appointing yourself to the first, that's what I'm saying.
You can just wait till you board.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For the, for the clarity of the minutes, could I recommend that we go ahead and vote the consent agenda and then the, Mr. Skinner's appointment in the Transportation Committee separately?
That's fine. All right. I've done forgot where we're at. Motion to approve the consent agenda, minus eight and 19.
Yes, sir.
Still moved.
All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner? Chair's aye.
First polled item is item eight. That's the appointment of Amanda Blaylock to the Citizen Budget Review Committee.
Any comments? Mr. Dr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems that without meaning to, a few years ago, we seem to have opened a Pandora's When Mr. McLaughlin's appointee to C. Tag was approved only by a four to three vote, that was followed during the next election campaign by letters to the editor chastising us, those who voted for Mr. McLaughlin's nominee, under the assumption that since we voted for him and three did not vote for him, we must agree with this individual on every issue. We've sown a lot of confusion among the public by making these decisions based on issue positions and ideology. The problem with that, I've been lucky to have been in the majority most of my time on this board, but we're always gonna have ideological and issue differences amongst ourselves. And chances are, if we disagree with each other, we're gonna get, disagree with each other's appointees. But are we gonna sit here and vote down every nominee of those in the ideological minority? Because that's, I, I've been approached by members of the public saying, why did you vote for this, to approve this person to this committee when he or she thinks this, this, and this on issues? And that's becoming more and more common. And I try to explain that barring ethical or legal issues, a supervisor should have the appointee they want. But we opened up this Pandora's Box a few years ago, and we're still living with it. I'm going to vote to approve this nominee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, whenever an appointee comes up, first of all, whatever supervisor appoints that, I don't look at what their ideology is, what they believe in. Are they qualified? And I believe that. Are they qualified to do that? Okay? And so, I would certainly be in favor of this.
Mr. Marshall?
Ms. Blaylock was appointee and was my decision to appoint her. I feel that Ms. Blaylock's the best suited for this position to represent my district. Her leadership skills, her experience with budget, that's what we need. This is an advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors. I have somebody that has experience working with county, with the county budget, I feel that's a perfect person for the job. And she has my full support.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Quick comment, you know, and I'll go back to what Mr. Trampy brought up. Early on, you know, first part of the board, I, Mr. Skinner brought to my attention, basically a supervisor's appointee shouldn't be challenged. And I was the first one, I think, that was challenged in this particular board. When I nominated, two, two folks that I nominated were both challenged. And I thought I was just, matter of fact, I hate to call you out, but you voted against that one person. So, I, I was a little frustrated when that occurred. And so then we got back, as Mr. Trampy's saying, you know, not necessarily allowing the supervisor to pick their choice. Right? Then, like Mr. Trampy said, it does get political in certain things, or you start questioning the supervisor's choices. And I, I have an issue with that. Because, I mean, I don't agree with everybody that's been selected. And either we need to go back to a system where we don't challenge the appointee, you have that right to appoint whoever you appoint, or we're gonna get back into this political piece back and forth, or, you know, personality, or whatever it may be. You know, so, I mean, I, I understand this, as CBRC, I mean, there's some folks on there that I don't think are the best choices for that committee. But yet, they're there. And it was a choice of one of the supervisors, and that's fine. So, I, I don't know.
Mr. Ross?
I just wanna say that I'm not gonna go into details of, of my opinion here, other than, this is not an ideal, ideology issue for me. I've gotten several complaints of ethics violations, and I won't even say who, but one of these appointees. And it's a matter of principle for me on the others, not a, you know, I, I, really hurts me to go against anybody's choice for appointment. But I have, I feel it's a matter of principle, in my own opinion, to not support either one.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. I, I'll, I'll support both of them, well, one being my appointee. But I, I don't think that there's anything wrong with voting your conscience when it comes to appointees. If you don't think that that person is the best person, you know, I think that you should state that, and you should state the reason for it, and, and, you know, be, be transparent about it. But, you know, the, the, letting any board member have anybody that they want, you know, I, certain people just are not suited for those positions, and, and I'm not gonna sit back and not say that. So, I don't wanna let any, or, or hold any supervisor back from voting the way that they believe that they need to vote.
All right. Mr. Skinner? I'll just, I, I'm gonna support Ms. Blaylock, since we're talking about this one. But I think we need, and that's nothing against Ms. Blaylock, and I'm just talking, at this point, I'm just talking openly, not about any one individual or anything that's been out there. But I think, as supervisors, when we make these appointments, if we hear or learn or see of things being said, done, that questions the ethical standings of that individual, it is up to us as the appointee, or appointer, to call that out and to make an effort to correct that. If it then cannot be corrected, and even before that, this board needs to take action. We can't just have people out there socially, publicly, acting unprofessional and violating the ethics that they've signed and values that they, they're supposedly stand for. If you can't hold your emotions and your stuff in check, then you probably shouldn't be on the board in the first place. That's just a general comment, but I will support Ms. Blaylock. And I, I'd like to go ahead and just handle this one first, if we could. So, this would be number eight, the appointment by Mr. Marshall, Amanda Blaylock. Mr. Marshall?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Amanda Blaylock to the CBRC Committee.
All right. Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Nay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Skinner, I'm tagging on it this twice, Yakubowski.
Yes.
Chairs, chairs, yes. Phew. All right. 19, the appointment of Ms. Napper to CBRC. Comment from the board? Mr. or Dr. Trampy?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I'm not prepared to vote against another member's nominee at this time. However, I would like to read from the Code of Conduct, which applies not just to this board, but to our appointed boards and commissions. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the Board of Supervisors, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, the staff, or public. I have been shown Facebook posts by this nominee, which come right up to the line and maybe cross it, on attacking character and motives. Now, we were told, when this, and I supported this nominee on a four to three vote originally, we were told at that time that there was no conflict between her position on the SEA Board and her posi, and being on CBRC. Now, I know a lot of things get said during political campaigns, and the Facebook posts I just mentioned were during a political campaign. And the SEA seems to have made itself into a political organization. But if this nominee is not able to fulfill the duties she sees as a member of the SEA Board, and also keep our Code of Conduct, she should remove herself from one or the other. I'm not going to vote no this evening, but I would remind everyone that the bylaws we just passed allow for this board at any time to remove someone with or without cause from a board or commission. And if the personal attacks, she can say anything she wants on issues, perfectly fine. But if personal attacks continue, I personally will make the motion to remove her. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments for the board? All right, let's do, okay, Mr. Yakubowski?
Usually, whoever pulls the nomination, or the, the consent agenda item, usually makes a comment of why they pulled it. And I'm not sure, but Mr. Ross did allude to ethics questions that were had. And if, if they are about my nominee, nothing has been brought to me about ethics violations dealing with, with Ms. Napper. But, but I would like to comment on what Mr. Trampy was talking about. You know, one, one of the things that I don't think that anybody gives up when they are appointed to any board, and these are voluntary positions, that people take their time out to go and, and spend time and look at budgets and, and do what they need to, to, to serve the county. But I don't think that people give up their right to say whatever they want outside of that position. Now, if this person at these meetings is acting in this manner, that's one thing. But I'm not gonna stifle their free speech afterwards to state whatever they would like to state about anybody that they wanna say anything about. You know, I, I chuckle to myself, because I sit here, and I've been attacked from that podium, not only politically, but personally, multiple times. My character has been assassinated, my ethics have been charged. In fact, this board brought me up on ethics charges. So, you know, I, I think that this can start getting out of control. And, and I do find it amazing that the only people that are ever singled out for this type of scrutiny are the people that attack you. When the attacks are going the other way, there's never this scrutiny, there's never this, hey, you know, we need to act in, in a better manner than that. And so, if there are ethics issues with this nominee, please bring them to me. But from the one board meeting that I've watched of the CBRC, where they, they sit up here and it's televised, you know, I'm not gonna say that it's, there's unethical behavior, but, you know, there's a lot of snipping that goes on at that committee. And if that pours out into Facebook posts, then so be it. But if they use their official position to do that, especially at a meeting, then I think that's something that we need to take care of. But I would like to make the motion to reappoint Dawn Napper to the CBRC.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Chair, just one comment. Mr. Yakubowski, I don't know if your email's not working right or not, but Carl's actually sent both of us write-ups on the ethics violations of your nom, of your appointee. So, it, it hasn't been recent either, it's been over the past several months.
Mr. Chairman.
And, Dr. Trampy?
Just for the record, none of the attacks were on me. This isn't personal.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes, my email does work fine. Thank you for checking. But, Mr. County Attorney, were those ethics violations during the CBRC meetings, or spoken as a person, as a member of the CBRC, I state that? Or was it on a different page? Because one of the great things about our political system is that you're allowed to wear many hats. And you are allowed to make different comments on, on different issues, no matter where you serve. And so, unless that person was representing the CBRC and saying these things, which has not been brought to me, I would, I would really hesitate to characterize that as a ethics violation.
Mr. Yakubowski, I, I think the facts of the matter, as, as you are discussing them, are clear. I respectfully, at this point, decline to get into that. Rather, I would recommend that any, any discussion regarding legal advice, regarding procedure, regarding ethics complaints and things of that nature, be afforded to the, the board who has the, the attorney-client privilege. So respectfully, I would decline to, to get into that too much at the time. But I, I think both, both you and Mr. Ross, you know, certainly have an understanding of the facts of the situation. So, I'll leave it at that. But respectfully, I, I would ask that, you know, before we get into that, that we do so in closed session, if that's the board's desire, and, and allow that for a future date, so I can, you know, obviously be prepared.
Mr. Yakubowski?
No, I was just gonna say, thank you.
Okay. I'll just say one thing. Ethics is ethics, whether you're on a committee or not, outsider in. And if you want, you know, any sheriff's office, if you wanna work for them and have your constitutional rights, not that it's against, it's not a violation, but you certainly can't go out and speak your mind as, as sheriff deputy, I can assure you, since the sheriff can hire and fire at will, anytime, any day, anywhere. So, try that. But ethics is ethics. Roll call vote, Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Nay.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Chairman, that brings us to public presentations. Amy, has anyone signed up for public presentation?
No, sir.
So, anybody that did not sign up to speak, that would like to speak for a public presentation? Seeing none, we'll close. Public, oh, Ms. Bergeron. Mr. Chair, if you could read the rules.
Ma'am, public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the board. This is not a forum for, for dialogue or debate. Please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet, and please print clearly, come to the lectern when your name is called. Please clearly state your name and address and voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or on behalf of a group, in which case you'll have five minutes. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcome by the board. Ma'am, you'll have three minutes. The yellow light comes on, and we have 30 seconds to sum up. And at the red light, per the board's bylaws, the microphone will be turned off.
I am speaking for the SEA.
You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, distinguished public servants. My name is Jean Bergeron. I'm in the Battlefield District. I am the president of the Spotsylvania Education Association. I'm here tonight to welcome our newly elected board member, and as well as our familiar faces. And I share with you greetings for a Happy New Year. The mission of the Spotsylvania Education Association is to unite our members and community in fulfilling the promise of a high-quality public education that successfully prepares every single student to realize his or her full potential. We believe this can be accomplished by advocating for students, education professionals, and support professionals. This is exactly what we will continue to do. SEA will never stop advocating for schools, students, and staff. Each year, some of you berate the school division and support the micromanagement of the school budget by the CBRC and other partisan political puppets. Last year, this board strongly recommended that the school division undertake an Evergreen study. Now, that study has become a political football. The county study has been implemented, while the schools have only had their side of the study torn apart. While you sit here with a budgetary surplus, the schools have not received any additional funding. While that funding would only be a one-time payment, I'm sure our elected school board would find an appropriate use for funds. I'm sure you would agree that our children are worth it. With the exception, exception of Mr. Marshall, you gentlemen have sat on that dais for the last two years and told us that the county could not fund the school budget. Some of you have shed tears, and some have made excuses. None of you have taken action to put schools first. I stand before you as a veteran, citizen, taxpayer, homeowner, voter, educator, and the president of the SEA to direct you to put schools first. We demand action on your part, on the behalf of schools now. We will no longer tolerate excuses and tears. They do not turn on lights or put food on the table. Are you gentlemen aware that while you sit there patting yourselves on the backs for not increasing taxes, you have professional workers with degrees who receive government assistance? That there are children of educators who receive free and reduced lunch? Stop congratulating each other and winking and nodding about how well you are doing. It is time to show your constituents that you care about more than your party line. It's time to unite the county. It's time to stop playing games. It's time for one Spotsylvania. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that, come on up, sir? And Ms. Bergeron, could you state your address? You didn't do that.
I'm in Kingswood, South Dakota.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Peter Fotenhauer. I reside in the Battlefield District in the Ballantre subdivision.
Can you go ahead and provide your address, not just...
My address is on file, sir.
For this board?
It's on file with this board, I've given it before.
I'm gonna forfeit your time if you cannot provide the information that we ask each time.
I live at 10604 Wakeman Drive.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to address some budget concerns. Our school division has been cutting and reducing its budget for the last eight years, yet this board, the last two years, has continued to say, we can't afford everything you're asking for, while at the end of the year, you run a surplus. Last year, it was $7 million, this year, it's $12 million or thereabouts. And frankly, teachers are tired of paying out of their pockets for copies, for classroom supplies, for the basic necessities required to do our jobs, when you all keep pleading poverty and we have to keep the tax rate low. You have a surplus... You have a surplus, not because you've been keeping the tax rate artificially low, but because you're deliberately underfunding parts of your core services. There's nowhere left to cut in the school board's budget. And now you're facing a crisis because you have an Evergreen study that you insisted the schools participate in, that gave results you weren't expecting. It is unfair that you are taking care of employees who work for your side of the county while ignoring what the results showed for employees who work for the county but happen to get a check that's signed by the school board and not the Board of Supervisors. We are all county employees, and we are tired of being pitted against each other. The time has come for you to fully fund a budget this year that covers all of the school board's needs without saying you can't afford it, when the truth the last two years has been different. I also wanted to comment briefly on what I saw tonight. Frankly, I've never seen such a display of moral cowardice and lack of character. If you have the gall to question the integrity or character of anyone, especially when they're present in the room, so much so that you want to insinuate that they have been behaving in ways that are inappropriate based on your code of conduct, you have a duty to the community to state why, not to character assassinate and use generalizations. The behavior on display tonight is not acceptable for elected members that represent our county. It is obvious that the partisanship so many of you have talked about is poisoning your ability to fairly govern the county to which you've been elected to serve. Regardless of whether we agree politically, we are all...
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up to speak, that wishes to speak? I'm going to close public comment. Mr. Marshall? Did you want? Okay. We'll close public comment.
We have a presentation. We can certainly have, is there, it's not on the printed agenda, the bylaws have changed in the meantime. Mr. Chairman, at your pleasure, board reports, present?
I'll look to the board. Do you want to go to board presentations, or the? Go ahead, Mr. Yakubowski.
We're doing board reports now?
Well, I'm just asking, is that what you all want to do, or you want to move along with presentations? We're kind of, Mr. Skinner's brought this up.
I don't...
The new bylaws voted tonight would put board reports at this point.
Let's do board reports.
Okay.
Mr. Skinner.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In front of you all, you've got a reappointment of people that have served for me for at least the last four years. And added to that paper, I'm going to ask that myself be reappointed to the Transportation Committee. And the names are there, or the positions, and the names, and phone numbers, if you'd like to talk to them. But I'd like to make a motion that the following people be reappointed, myself, Gregory Bell to the CBRC, Mary Lee Carter is my Planning Commissioner, Cable Television Telecommunication Commission is Wendy Latella, Historic Preservation Commission is Jason Latella, Minority Affairs Committee is Todd Rupp, Parking Recreation Commission is Michael Lynch, and Board of Building Code Appeals will be Mr. Rump.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Mr. Skinner. And Amy, did you get a copy?
I can give her one, we're done.
Okay. All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLoughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Chair's aye.
And my second comment tonight is, I think, exactly what we just brought up to us. You know, when we have any employee in this county, and we have discipline or something on that discuss, we have always taken it to the back. And I think what I'd like to see and make a motion is, and this could be anybody, just happened to be that, you know, this had to do with education tonight, but there's other groups out there. I would like to make a motion that if we have a, something pulled from the consent agenda, and it has to do with a person, I don't think that should be made public. I think we should either save it to when we go back to closed session and discuss it there. Because I think, without getting, you know, it's okay to discuss among us, but there's some needs not to let the entire county know, things of that nature. And I think it would be very appropriate and professional if we take care of the privacy of people out there and just let it flow free like we did tonight. So my motion would be to, if we have a consent agenda item that we have pulled, and it pertains to any personnel, I would like to hold off, explain it, discuss it in closed session, and come back and vote on it.
Carl, we able to do that?
Well, there's lots of, there's a couple of things to consider. Personnel generally is something that you can discuss in closed session. Appointments are not personnel, they're not employees necessarily, so that would be different. If there is something that comes up, though, with respect to legal advice, which I alluded to with, just now with Mr. Yakubowski, if there's legal advice regarding that type of subject, you can go back in the closed session. So it really depends on the specific situation and the subject as to whether or not you could go back in the closed session. So I would certainly caution the board for making any kind of all-applying policy or indication that would require that without being able to determine each item. But certainly, Mr. Skinner, I think, has voiced his desire to the board as to do that. But I would certainly caution against adopting and voting on any kind of policy.
Can we add that to the agenda? I mean, usually our agenda's set, and we know what's going to be on the closed session. And you do the announcement, do you just add that?
Well, yes. What I do is, I put the subjects of what we're going to discuss in closed session, it's in the closed session resolution. So that's usually a part of your packet, but that's something that, you know, I can add to up to the end.
This won't be on the packet, this is going to be spur of the moment. Well, not spur of the moment, but it's going to...
Yeah, it can be in the, if you all give me enough lead time to actually identify it before we go into closed session, you know, it can certainly be added. As far as, you know, if you want to add anything tonight, I'm not sure if that's a desire to talk about anything tonight, but obviously, I don't have any information to add anything, at least at this time, so.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd prefer to maybe even make it simpler. And that is, if it's under the code of ethics or code of conduct, then I think that's a legal issue, because someone's going to have to determine whether it is. So if we limit it just to where we think it's a code of ethic or a code of conduct, then I ask that it be taken in private.
I would recommend that if there be some policy with respect to code of ethics, I would also just add, and the board requires legal advice, just something to add to that. That's, that's something that's...
But Carl, you won't be able to do this that same night, will you? Provide us legal counsel off the bat?
Not usually, no. Obviously, I would need some time to prepare to, you know...
So it'd need to be pulled and added to the next agenda?
Provide that advice, et cetera. Yes, I, of course, in giving any advice, you know, I would certainly like time to actually, you know, research and prepare and be able to give you, you know, the best advice that I can, so certainly. But, you know, if there's ever any item, again, that needs to be added, the board can do that at a time. But again, it's very difficult, you know, with respect to adopting an overall, you know, policy, so.
Skinner, I'll put it back at you, what you want to do.
Well, I don't know if it's legal, it's just a determination, is the code of conduct or the code of ethics been preached?
He's saying he doesn't know that he'll be able to make that determination in closed session, the very night of the...
I mean, it states fairly clear in both our code of conduct and our ethics, so I'm not sure. I mean, I'll leave it up to the rest of the board, this is just a, if you want to, please, I mean, we don't have to vote on it tonight. I just think what I saw tonight is somewhat embarrassing. It could, you know, it just happened to be that these two had education behind them, but there's other groups out here that aren't even associated with education, and, you know, I don't think we're that type of board that's trying to put publicly somebody on embarrassing. That's all. And there's got to be a better way that we handle these things than what we said tonight, to be honest with you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Do you want to rescind your motion, or? You've made a motion.
I'll rescind the motion, that's fine.
Are you through with your board report?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Marshall?
I'll try to make this as brief as possible, but I want to first off, thank the citizens of Berkeley District, they gave me the opportunity to be in this position. I want to thank county staff and all the supervisors on the board, everybody has reached out to me. I'm the new guy here tonight, and I'm going to be honest with the public and everyone here, our county administration staff, and our county attorney's office, and our IS department is top-notch as far as reaching out and getting me acclimated. I thank you all very much for that. I was, you reached out to me, got me what I needed, when I needed it. I appreciate that. I may be in the wrong, it may be at the wrong time, but I would like for the board, if we could, to discuss a vote that was taken, I may be, needs to be brought up in new business. In the November 28th meeting, we talked about getting the school board and the Board of Supervisors together. It was decided in that joint meeting to have a, to collaborate services, to have county staff collaborate that. Maybe it's just a lack of information on my part, but I'd like to know what county staff has been assigned to do that. And I think that as a board, we should make a decision that a board member or board members from both the school board and the Board of Supervisors need to take part in this. It would make it so much easier to have a liaison during this discussion for both boards to make this go smoothly, if it can be done.
I can just comment on what was decided. Mr. Taylor and Dr. Baker were supposed to get together, I think the date was June 30th? That y'all were supposed to come back and present to us whatever y'all have discussed and determined at that time, through that time period.
Yes, sir. And we've traded some information and some emails, we're both in the beginnings of the budget process, we haven't had an opportunity yet to sit down and discuss ways forward. But I, and certainly the models that I've seen for going forward with shared services would generally benefit from participation of board members and school board members to make the undertaking work, as to particularly how that group might be fit together to lead the effort. I would respectfully suggest that I'd like to discuss that with Dr. Baker and bring forward a shared recommendation of Mr. Baker and myself, Dr. Baker and myself, on what participation models or what templates exist for bringing together lead staff and elected officials from both houses to form a team to go forward.
Yes.
That's in the works.
I just speak, as a member now, just, I'd like to just see what they can work out between the two before we throw in elected officials in the mix.
No disrespect to anyone, but it's a lot of, when you're looking at combining services, you've got to look at every department head. There's a lot of people that are going to have, you have to get a lot of people together on this. It's a big undertaking.
I'd like to see what they bring forward, and then if we need to start adding a committee to it, or board members and school board members, then we can certainly do that.
I would like for, like I say, I would like for us to get to that, you know, to add some more, like I say, a liaison between the two boards. That's, that's what I mean, each one should have representation. And if you want to go to one other thing that I'd like to bring up is the, we have a county computer lab at the Marshall Center. It's being used, I've spoke with IS, it's being used about 40% of the time by county employees. So it's 60% of the time that it's not being used. I would like to see if we could give the Snow Library access to this area to provide more access for the children not only in Berkeley and Livingston District, but all throughout the county, and the users of the library, to have a place to go to get internet access and be able to use that. I don't know if I need to make that in a form of a motion, I wouldn't say it'd be a form of a motion, maybe we need a motion to approve or get county staff to draw a resolution and make that happen.
I think we can direct Mr. Taylor to maybe take a look at that.
Certainly, or Mr. Marshall, I would be very happy to host a meeting, bring together a meeting of yourself and IT. This is actually a concept that I brought forward with IT earlier in 2017, and we ran into problems with system security, switching, and other technical problems with sharing that asset between county IT and the Snow Library. In the interest of time, I'd be happy outside of the meeting process to sit down with you and the IT staff and bring all up to speed on that. And if there are any fresh revelations on how that situation can be solved, I'm happy to bring those forward. But we had investigated this last year, and we'd gotten frustrated with the concept.
Yeah, I'm fine with discussing it. If there's a service out there and we have an opportunity to provide it to the citizens of the county, I don't want to withhold it from them. I want them to have the opportunity.
Absolutely, I absolutely understand, and particularly with the value of internet access and the desire to expand that at Snow, and this is something we had worked on for a while and had gotten frustrated with over operational issues for our IT folks and security issues for the county, but we can happily look at it again.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it again. If it can be done, I'd like to get it done. If not, I'd like to give the citizens a reason why it wasn't...
Right. There may be other options, too, for enlarging internet access at Snow without necessarily using that room.
Right.
And we can explore those as well with the library.
All right.
Mr. Marshall?
That's all I have.
Okay. Dr. Trampi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to remind everyone that January 11th, which is Thursday, is Human Trafficking Awareness Day internationally, and this board passed a resolution endorsing that, which I appreciate. The Fraternal Order of Police has asked people to wear blue on that day to encourage more awareness of this serious problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ross?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McLoughlin?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Yakubowski, I got it right?
Yes, you did, thank you. Just a few things I wanted to make the board aware of initiatives that I'm going to try to push for this year. One is enhanced fire and rescue. I know that there is a plan out there to do it in a few years to add career personnel and to enhance our system. And I will let you know at budget time to, that I will like to see that pushed forward and do it in a year, because public safety is a top priority. Number two is a strategic plan. Still harping on that, and would love to get that together and put one together. And even in regards to that, perhaps even have a board retreat where we can discuss nothing but the strategic plan. Road initiatives, would like to bring back up at some point this year, the Spotsylvania Parkway Extension, and also the Germana Boulevard Extension, which are two key pieces to a successful transportation network in our county. Another item is the implementation of the Evergreen Study for the schools, as we have done for the county. I think that that is key, because the schools and the county employees are both county employees. And to segregate them in that way, I think, is not the right way to do it. And if, the practice of this board has always been to try to, if we do for one, we do for both. And I think that us implementing the Evergreen Study on the county side needs to be done on the school side the same way. Also, a social services building to include the adoption of a campus master plan. We had a presentation about that a while back, and I think that we need to really get our arms around it, because I do believe all indicators are the construction this year, and housing is going to boom. And I don't want to see us get far behind and have to play catch-up with a lot of these issues. I'd also like to see us bring back the E D T C. I think it is a committee that is sorely needed in the county. And with tourism, there was an article in the paper the other day, that tourism could be a billion-dollar industry in the area. And I think that we really need to get ahead of that and use that to help offset the tax burden that our citizens face each and every year. I'd also like to see the E D A start making presentations to the board again. I haven't seen or heard from them in a while. And it would be nice to know what they're up to and how we can work together for economic development in the county. Thank you.
From the chair, I guess I'll start out with the S-Power. It's a solar farm that's looking at Spotsylvania County, specifically the Livingston District and the area of West Catharpan Road. It's fairly close to the West Catharpan and Post Oak intersection, but there is going to be... It's fairly close to the West Catharpan-Post Oak intersection, but there is going to be a public meeting held Thursday, this Thursday, at 6:30 at Craig's Baptist Church. So I'd invite anybody that is curious or has questions, concerns, to please show up and to voice those concerns and questions to what's going on out there. Next, I'll say, as the newly-elected chair, and I appreciate the board's support in that, I will be bringing forward, hopefully, Mr. Yakubowski's idea of the strategic plan. I do want to push through that and get that completed. I'm hoping to have open communications with all board members and hopefully make some good decisions and moves for Spotsylvania County as a whole. At least that's what I'm gonna attempt to do. So, as far as the schools, I don't think anybody on this board has not said that the pay raises are important, so I don't know where that's coming from. I think Mr. Taylor has been advised by just about everybody that the schools' pay raises are a must. Now, whether they're gonna be the low end or the high end, I would prefer the mid-range, just like we did for county employees, if you want to be the same, and I'm gonna support that. So this is very, very early in the budget session to be talking about or accusing anybody of anything. We haven't even really gotten started and gotten presentations done to ourselves to know where we're gonna be and what we have to work through to make everything work. So if you could be, please be patient and let us work through all the needs of all the departments and all our citizens, I'd appreciate it, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With multiple comments on the schools' Evergreen Study, may I just point out very briefly that we invited the schools to participate in parallel with the county staff on the pay study in the first place, and the schools' Evergreen results came in late, too late to be considered as part of the budget for the present fiscal year. So it has never been any, there's never been any plan or intention, desire, or scheme to exclude them. They, given the timing of their completion, they put themselves a year behind in cycles, and we're working on solutions or ways forward in the budget development process, and the board will see more, and the community will see more in our proposed budget.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to transition to a presentation concerning ending unsheltered homelessness in our Planning District 16, by the care coordinator Kate Gibson from the GWRC.
Ms. Gibson, thanks for coming out. Make sure your buttons hit on the microphone.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so thank you for having me tonight. My name is Kate Gibson, and I work for the George Washington Regional Commission. I'm here tonight representing the Fredericksburg Regional Continuum of Care, and specifically talking about an initiative that we're proposing to end unsheltered homelessness throughout the Planning District. This grew out of a request that we received from the City of Fredericksburg for information on what it would take to fully address the unsheltered homelessness problem, and from there, they asked us to really scale it at the regional level and to get support from not only the City of Fredericksburg, but the four counties of the Planning District to really be able to fully address the problem. The Continuum of Care is the network of organizations throughout the Planning District that work together to address homelessness. The George Washington Regional Commission is the lead agency, so we provide the staffing for this initiative, and we have over 40 partners, nonprofit organizations, government organizations throughout the Planning District to support this work. The goal of the COC and also of the initiative is to end homelessness, and I'm gonna break that definition down for you. It really means four things. The first is to identify all persons experiencing homelessness, so we want to know who they are, and we want to know them by name. Providing immediate access to shelter for those who are outside. Ensuring the opportunity to move back into permanent housing within 30 days. We try to rehouse people as quickly as possible to end their homelessness. And preventing new episodes of homelessness whenever possible. We do this through a homelessness response system that's been created and structured to address these four pieces of the definition. So we identify, shelter, rehouse, and prevent. Using this collaborative approach, we have several partners, as you can see, that participate in providing this response. Our current levels of homelessness response system funding are about $4.2 million. This includes money from the budgets of several different organizations like the George Washington Regional Commission, Thurman Brisbane Center, MICA Ministries, and Powerhouse and Hope House. You can see the breakdown, over half of our funding comes from federal and state government sources, 11% from local government, and then private foundations, private donors, et cetera. So this slide shows, tries to quantify what our capacity is versus our needs. So we have $4.2 million in annual funding, but there's still a significant gap. On the left, you have the number of households that we were able to rehouse in calendar year 16, based on our current levels of housing funding, and on the right, you have the number of households that were in need of that resource. And that, for us, means that they were not able to self-resolve their homelessness within 14 days of becoming homeless. This chart shows the number of people who are homeless in our area compared to the growing population in the region. As you can see, the levels of homelessness have hovered around 200 for the last five years. And then to zoom in on the unsheltered population, over the last five years, we've seen that number go up from about 30 to about 40. And I should say that we are defining unsheltered here as people who are sleeping outside or in their car. We know that there's a human side to this problem, but there's also a significant cost associated with this problem as well, and that cost comes from people cycling through emergency room and jails and the homeless services system. So on the top, you see a bar, the red and yellow, that shows one person's two-year timeline. All of the red is times that they spent in shelter, all of the yellow is times that they spent in jail, at significant cost to that community. And at the bottom, you can see a chart with local numbers overlaid, showing the cost of a night in a housing program, which is $20, that includes case management. A night in the shelter is $30, a night in jail is $68, and a night in the emergency room is $1,400. So FUSE, it stands for Frequent User Systems Engagement, that's a model that's been done to study this all across the country. We are actually undertaking our own local FUSE study right now, and FUSE studies have shown cost savings of anywhere from $12,000 to $16,000 per person per year by helping them move into housing, which helps break this cycle of cycling through institutions. So the solution that we propose for the initiative to end unsheltered homelessness is additional resources for housing, and emphasis on the word additional. We don't want to dismantle the system that already is in place, we need it to continue to shelter people and respond to their immediate needs, but what we're really lacking is money to help us move people into housing quickly. There are specifically three things that we need funding for. One is housing location. We employ a housing locator who networks with landlords and helps people find a place to live, move into. Money for housing subsidies, so we help with security deposit and rent so that people can quickly get into housing, that ends their homelessness, but then we work with them to build their income so that they're able to sustain once we step away. The housing subsidy could be short-term, which is rapid rehousing model, R R H, or a long-term housing subsidy, and the model for that is permanent supportive housing, or P S H. And then the third piece is case management. So every person who is housed through one of these programs is paired with a case manager who works with them as intensively as needed to help them maintain their housing stability. And we've been doing this since, I think we decided 2010, although before that, it wasn't called rapid rehousing, so we were still doing it before then, but we have a success rate of 81%. So 81% of persons who are rehoused through either rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing do not return to homelessness within two years. And I should say that that two-year clock starts ticking after they're already exited out of our program, so that doesn't include the time that we spend with them, case managing them. So at this point, we've shown what we can do, and what we're asking for is additional resources to scale up that program. So the cost that we came up with for year one is based on the number of people who are unsheltered, and how many we think would need a long-term subsidy versus a short-term subsidy, and we came up with about $500,000 per year for year one. And then in year two, that number would go down to about $400,000. And that's because we would be getting ahead of the problem a little bit, and wouldn't have as many people to rehouse in year two. The way that we propose to structure this initiative is to start with a 100-day community challenge, to try to house as many people as possible, really build community support for the initiative and get people excited about it, and then to move into the ongoing initiative, which would last two years and even beyond that, to help people obtain and sustain a functional end to unsheltered homelessness. So services, so the housing subsidies and the case management would be provided by organizations identified through an RFP process. GWRC would provide the project management, so we would be the fiscal agent, all money would flow through us, and then we would reimburse the organizations providing the services, and we would also provide project oversight, looking at data and making sure the organizations are meeting their benchmarks. And finally, we're asking for the financial support from local governments. Here's what we are asking for, broken down by each locality. The way that we determine the breakdown is based on the ZIP code of last permanent address of literally homeless households served in FY17. So Spotsylvania households made up 33% of the total households served, and that's where we came up with the 161958. We, the Continuum of Care Board has passed a full 10-page proposal detailing what this would look like, and also referencing data from other communities where these types of programs have worked, and that's available on our website, fredericksburgcoc.org. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'm not sure what slide you had on there. You had some, the continuum of the red and yellow, whether it's jail or, the data from 2001?
Yes, that was from a New York City FUSE study.
Hey, do we have anything that's more relevant and up-to-date for local?
We are currently undertaking a FUSE study, but it's only in its second year, I think. So actually, Leslie Martin with the University of Mary Washington's conducting the evaluation, and she's in the middle of sorting through data, but she's getting data from the hospital, from the jail, and from us, so...
It'd be more beneficial to have local data that's actually not 17-years-old.
Sure.
So is this a new organization that's standing up?
No. So the supports would probably be provided by one of our existing partners, so MICA Ministries, Hope House, or Thurman Brisbane Center, that's still to be determined, but it's gonna be provided by someone who's been doing this for the last five years at least.
So GWRC is not staffing this at all, just...
No, we're just the fiscal agent, so money would pass through us to an organization.
And are there any metrics, any other metrics that you can provide, updated metrics that say, you know, if we invest $160,000 in Spotsylvania, we will see a reduction in taxpayers' costs by twofold?
So I think a better way to think about it, rather than actual cost savings, is cost...
Avoidance.
Sorry.
It's avoidance, right?
Right, so police who are currently spending their time doing this could then be spending their time doing something else.
No, and I agree. If that's something you can provide in the future, and has this been presented to the Social Services Board?
This is not, no, it hasn't.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I got one. Is any other location in the Commonwealth doing this, or anything similar?
So rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing are done all across the state, and really all across the nation. They're pretty much the best practices for addressing homelessness.
But has anybody incorporated this idea, where you're putting money into the rapid housing, and how's that been working for them? How's it, have they shown results?
Yeah, so rapid rehousing, so permanent supportive housing is an older model, and it's actually evidence-based and verified. Rapid rehousing is newer, but it's shown really promising outcomes. One of the things that's really great about rapid rehousing is that you can put in less money and get better results. So the old model of homeless services was housing readiness, that's when we saw a lot of transitional housing programs, where people were in a program for two years before they actually moved into their housing. What we found is that that was really high cost, because you have one family, you know, for two years in a residential program, and few exits to permanent housing, fewer than with rapid. Rapid rehousing, we have over 90% exits to permanent housing, people retain their housing, and the cost, the financial assistance cost per person is usually about $2,500.
Okay. Now, that $500,000 you're showing, that is not just for Spotsylvania County, is it?
No, that's for the whole Planning District.
Okay, and can you tell us the whole planning, so everybody will know what that incorporates? I know Stafford and...
Yeah, I don't know if I'm able, do you still have the slide up on your screen? There you go.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it has the breakdown, Caroline, Fredericksburg, King George, Spotsylvania, Stafford, yeah, so Planning District 16.
Another brain failure, sorry about that. Now, another question I have is, what happened, it's too early in the budget cycles, I'm sure, to get guarantees from each jurisdiction so far that they'll do this. What happens to, if you get, I'll just use Spotsylvania, I'm not saying we will, but let's say Spotsylvania funds theirs, but Stafford either partially or doesn't fund anything on their end, what happens?
Yeah, so we're happy to tailor this proposal, depending on what the interest is from the locality is. We've also put some thought into what it would look like if it was partially funded, and kind of estimating that $150,000 initiative would help us hire one case manager for rapid rehousing and rehouse 28 households over the course of the year, so that's one option to scale the project down.
28?
28 households.
Oh, that's pretty good. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us back around to just past public presentation time for 6:30. Amy, do we have anyone signed up for 6:30?
No, sir.
All right, do we have anybody that did not sign up for the 6:30 public presentation that wishes to speak? Okay. I don't think you can, Carl?
Yeah, you can only address the board once at any given meeting, ma'am. It's, under the bylaws, you can only address us once. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm speaking as a citizen.
That would be different, if you're not speaking on behalf of the group and you're speaking as a citizen, that would be under the bylaws, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I just wanted to, again, my name is Jean Bergeron, I live in the Battlefield District, Kingswood subdivision.
Can you give your specific address?
And that is exactly what I would like to address right now, is the requirement for giving my actual physical address at this meeting, and why that is a requirement.
Good call.
I think you are placing citizens, putting out information that they don't necessarily want placed out, and I would like to understand the reasoning behind that. If it's a matter of our voting district, you can know that through my subdivision. I have no other understanding of why you would need a street address, my actual physical street address, in order for me to speak.
Quite often, people don't even know their voting districts.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any direct knowledge of the history of this, I think it's been here for a while. I don't know legally that it's problematic, that's something I'd have to look into and provide some advice to the board, but, you know, generally speaking, you know, the board can set out, you know, how its meeting runs, if it requests that information...
Mr. Chair, I don't have any direct knowledge of the history of this. I think it's been here for a while. I don't know legally that it's problematic. That's something I'd have to look into and provide some advice to the board. But, you know, generally speaking, you know, the board can set out, you know, how its meeting runs. If it requests that information, it can certainly do so. You know, whether or not it can require that, that's certainly something I can provide you, you know, some legal advice on. I'm not prepared to do it this time, but I don't have any historical knowledge as to why that is the case. I'm sorry, ma'am.
And that's all I'm asking, is for you to look at that information. I feel that you are asking, some people may not want that information placed out there in a format where it is broadcast to the open public. I think if it's a matter of voting district, you can know that by our subdivision or even just a general street address, if you're not in a subdivision. I think you might benefit as public servants in hearing more from constituents that may not feel comfortable about giving out their physical address. And that's all I would like, is to see you look at that requirement for public comment and public hearing and see if it can be addressed.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else did not sign up for the 6:30 that would like to speak? It's closed public. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I have only one item I would like to share, and then we do have a closed session. I happen to be meeting today with David Kilgore, who's the general manager over at IDX. I'm working with him, and Mr. Ramora's been working with him on some hiring and workforce opportunities. You might recall those that attended their opening, Mr. Kilgore was wearing a gray T-shirt with the company logo on it, and we were admiring that, and I observed, you know, Mr. Kilgore, that would be really super with the county seal dotting the i. And I just wanted to show the community. IDX, our new corporate citizen, is as proud of us as we are of them, and they have produced and sent for the board and for the EDA and Economic Development Team, T-shirts printed with the IDX logo and the county seal dotting the i, and for those keeping score under the conflict of interests and reportable gifts and such, this is less than a $5.60 T-shirt. But thanks to the great folks at IDX, and we continue to wish them well. And that's all I have. Other information is in your packet. And Carl?
No report.
Closed session.
Closed session, you want to raise them?
This was actually reported at the end of the year, but we're happy to show this off also. I can even get it right-side up. And that is a check for $75,000.
Carl?
All right, this will be your resolution to adjourn in the closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Berkeley District. And whereas Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in closed meeting for discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically the healthcare industry. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding the matters of HCRI, Wilburn Gardens Properties LLC versus County Spotsylvania, case number CL 11-1475 and CL 15-1232, and Spotsylvania, Board of Supervisors Spotsylvania County versus Gilman Land and Timber LLC, case number CL-48. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and local taxation. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711a, 3, 5, and 7, and 8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
On favor?
Aye.
... meeting resolution, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board as such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening to closed meeting were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Yakbasi.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mrs. Kim.
Aye.
Chair's aye. All Ayes? We're adjourned.